I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here and we have Jim Campbell, one of our members who is participating remotely. And Patrick, are we expecting anyone else to participate?
Madam Chair, we're expecting.
Member Baker.
Member Baker to join remotely. He hasn't signed on yet.
Okay, great.
Dr. Ottley is also joining remotely, so his portion of the presentation will.
Thank you for that. And I'll just ask staff and other members to help me keep an eye on if a remote member is trying to flag me down and get some attention. So with that, could I ask Kayla, would you call the roll for us?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Member Baker, Member Campbell.
President.
Member, I see him. Just wave.
Member Carlson.
Here.
Vice Chair Norton.
Present.
Member Ryback.
Here.
Member Tine.
Here.
Chair Wheelock.
Here.
Secretary Williams.
Here.
Members are present.
And just for the record, Member Baker is also participating. Okay, well, thank you and welcome to Doug and Jim. We'll try to do this hybrid meeting as effectively as possible, but don't hesitate to just jump in. Should I not see you waving your hand or raising your hand? So thank you for being here today. Appreciate your efforts to participate even remotely. So let's move on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for today?
To move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we'll have to do a roll.
Oh, I apologize. You've just kind of briefed me that we're, because of the remote members will do a roll call for everything. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kayla.
Uh, Member Baker.
Aye.
Member Campbell.
Looks like they're frozen.
They're muted, I think.
All right. I think I will keep going, Madam Chair, and we can circle back. Member Carlson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
Aye.
Member Tine.
Aye.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
Member Baker.
Aye.
Definitely frozen.
And Member Campbell. The motion passes, Madam Chair.
Aye.
We'll keep moving and we hope that we'll be able to sort out our technology here briefly, but we're going to try it all over again. So this will be a little bit of a redo because we have a approval of the minutes on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, Kayla, would you mind?
Of course. Uh, Member Baker.
There eventually.
Aye.
Great. Member Campbell.
Aye. Aye.
I saw thumbs.
Member Carlson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Norton.
Present. Aye. I'm present and I.
Member Ryback.
Aye.
Member Tine.
Aye.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we'll move on to the public comment period. And before opening the public comment period, I'll remind anyone who wishes to address the board of just a couple of things. If you could please state your name for the minutes, and please keep your comments to no more than two minutes so that any others may be able to have time to speak as well. Also, I understand that we've set up the meeting live streams so that those of you who are watching online can use the chat figure feature to indicate that you'd like to speak. So we'll need staff to help us monitor that as well. So I now open the public comment period and invite any member here that wishes to address the board to step up to the microphone.
Anybody?
And no one in the chat? Okay. So I will now close the public comment period. And then for the chair's report, which is the next item on the agenda, I'll just touch on a couple of items that are in today's agenda and before us for consideration. The first, of course, is the annual report to the legislature, which follows the consent agenda. This, as you might recall, is the annual report, which is a retroactive summary of last year's DMC activities. And I just really want to do a shout out to the staff from all the staff involved that helped put this together and bring it forward for our review and will be presenting it. Secondly, for, for agenda items, Soldiers Field and the Downtown Riverfront are on the agenda here today with a recommended course of action. We've seen both of these items several times over the last few meetings. We've made some preliminary decisions relative to funding and support. So I look forward to these projects. I also want to acknowledge the extensive work that's been occurring in the community with city participation and leadership to help bring some consensus around the plans, particularly for Soldier's Field, which is such an asset for this community and such a long history about the role of that public space for improving the lives and creating an amenity in Rochester for, for the city of Rochester residents. Finally, we'll spend the last part of our meeting reviewing the findings of a recent market study, which I was excited to read some of the findings from that in the packet, but we'll have a presentation and discussion about that. And then I'll close my chair's report by inviting all of you to join the board at the joint work session, which of course will follow this meeting. This is actually the first time we've met in person for that since 2019, and I'm really looking forward to faces without masks on and a healthy dialogue among healthy participants. So we'll be conferring with our colleagues from the city more broadly, the county and EDA. And this will, of course, give us an opportunity to learn about and align our priorities from all of those jurisdictions and partners. And finally, I'd like to note that we'll welcome David Gamble, the principal designer of the Downtown Riverfront Plan to discuss infrastructure investment and, uh, which is a priority that is shared between all of the entities that will be participating in that joint session following this meeting. So really looking forward to that discussion. Appreciate all, again, the staff work across the entities to prepare for that discussion. And I'm, I think it'll be exciting. So that's it for the chair's report. We're going to keep moving along. We actually have the DMC 2022. It says 2022, but is it 2023?
No, it's 2022, just.
It is 2022. I had to look at the tab here again. Hang on a second. Year-to-date update is, this is also on the consent agenda. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Kayla.
Member Baker.
I'm just gonna cross those out on my notes right now. Okay.
Yes.
Member Carlson.
Aye.
Member Campbell, my apologies. Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
I and Member Campbell just single signaled that.
Thank you. Member Tine.
Aye.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I'll get there eventually. Okay, so we're going to move on to the annual report to the legislature. Could I ask, Kayla, would you mind just giving us a bit of a context, both for us and any of the listeners here of the meeting about this, the nature of this report?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Board members, good morning. As you know, the annual report comes from Minnesota statute 469.43 subdivision eight, which requires this report every year. It is a joint report between the DMCC and the city of Rochester, and it must be submitted by February 15th each year. The statute lists who must receive this report, and as you can see, it is quite a number of addresses. And in terms of what the report covers, that is also set forth by statute. It's required to cover five specific topics that are listed on the slide. And the report typically includes some highlights, as Chair Wheelock noted, from the past year, and some background information on the DMCC initiative itself, because not everyone who receives this report is necessarily familiar with it. Some are very familiar, and for some, it's a bit of a new thing. So we're trying to strike that balance. I'd like to note a few changes in this year's proposed report, in particular, based upon feedback from the board. As you will note, it includes a map of the development district with the key projects denoted, as well as some images and graphics throughout the report. And so we thank the board for that change for this year. And so the request before the board is to consider and review and approve, if appropriate, this draft report. I should note that the city council approved it earlier this week, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for that, Kayla. Any additional comments from the council president or the mayor about any of the city discussions or deliberations?
So there was overall strong support from city council for receiving the reports and much enthusiasm for continued work with DMC investing in Rochester, and I will talk more about Soldier's Field specifically on that item.
Mayor, any additional comments?
Madam Chair, if I could just add one, one comment as well. In the report, the highlights that are covered include transportation, public space, sewers, bio, med tech workforce, and some of our programmatic initiatives. But it also importantly covers the financial support as it's progressed. And I think it's noteworthy that this year is the, uh, the first year that the state sources have now exceeded the city and county sources. So the formula and the methodology to receive state funds required a certain amount of ramp up and a certain amount of private investment before it fully triggered the state support. And both the county and the city had front end, front end loaded, if you will, the resources and the work. But today and now going forward, the state support exceeds and will continue to exceed the local support by about three to one.
Madam Chair, and I think if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, this is the first year we've actually, we're getting our maximum amount from the legislature as well, the full 30 million.
That's right. Correct.
Any other comments on that? Patrick, any other slides for presentation?
Um, no, this covers that report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. You've all had a chance to read the report. It's been in your packet of materials. You also have a copy that was of materials that were left here for us this morning. Is there any further discussion among the members? Seeing none, I'll ask Kayla to call the roll.
Madam Chair, we'll need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
You think that this is the first time I've chaired a meeting? All right. Is there a motion for approval? And seconded? Okay. Moved and seconded. Now can I ask Kayla to do the roll?
Of course. Member Baker.
Aye.
Signaling yes. Member Campbell. Thank you. A member Carlson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
Aye.
Member Tine.
Aye.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you for that. Just testing all of my board colleagues about whether you know Robert's rules.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
No matter what you do, you will always be above the very low bar that I set during proceedings. So yeah, a lot of leeway.
Thank you. Okay, so Patrick, we might be running a bit ahead of schedule. Is Dr. Ottley available?
He is ready.
Okay, great. Thank you for joining us this morning, Dr. Ottley. We're ready for the EDA report.
Thank you, Chair Wheelock. I'm in a first test. Can you hear me?
You might be.
Are you able to hear me? All right. Doug can hear me. Jim can hear me. Can you hear me in the room?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you and good morning, Chair Wheelock and members of the board. Apologies, but I had a little sore throat this morning. Took the swab and found out I had COVID, so my trip to Montana proved to be fruitful in more ways than I would have expected. So really looking forward to joining you. I'll be virtual at the collaborative session. The, the DMC EDA team is looking forward to getting together with the other key stakeholders in the city and thinking about our future. First thing I'd like to do is take a moment to introduce you to three new fantastic DMC EDA board members, including Mary Jo Williamson. She is our board vice president and serves as the chief administrative officer of Mayo Collaborative Services, otherwise known as Mayo Clinic Laboratories, the third largest reference laboratory in the country. Mary Jo also is the current chair of Minnesota Chamber of Commerce. Next, Dennis Dolan. Dennis is Mayo Clinic's chief financial officer, as well as serving as the treasurer of Greater MSP. And then last but not least at all is Bobby Dresson. She's the president and CEO of Medical Alley Association. You can imagine how delighted we are to have an incredible group coming into the board with their incredible talent and experience. They join our current board members, including Tom Fisher, who is a legendary urban designer, and then local entrepreneurs Tracy Downs and Jocelyn Raimundo, Patrick and me. I'd also like to take just a moment to thank our two outgoing board members, including Jerry Bell and Harry Hoffman. Jerry, as you know, is a legendary chair and president retired of Minnesota Twins. He was there for our two World Series victories, and he was one of the big champions of the development of Target Field, which was a multi-year-long state-supported public-private partnership, much like the DMC. Harry Hoffman joined the EDA board as Mayo Clinic's treasurer and chief investment officer, and really was a great voice of passion for Rochester residents' perspective during his tenure. So the contributions of Jerry and Harry have been invaluable, and I want to take this opportunity to thank them publicly. Uh, now if I can turn to the agenda, we've got a few very important items before you. Chair Wheelock, as you noted, you will be voting on Soldier's Field and the Riverfront. These are recommended investments that the EDA has reviewed and the staff has gone over in conjunction with the stakeholders within the city. They are recommended to achieve key DMC goals, including improving community experience, as well as catalyzing additional private investment. Also in your packets, you're going to be seeing a recent survey that was conducted examining how Rochester is viewed as a destination for life science investment. There's a lot of details in there. They're very important, and I'm sure you'll have some questions. The bottom line, I think, is a promising one, which is Rochester has potential as a life science market, especially as if we can leverage the capabilities of Mayo Clinic, the state of Minnesota, as well as extending additional life science opportunities beyond healthcare. To do this and to remain competitive as a global destination medical center, we're going to require community-wide efforts and resources. And so our team will be talking about what is required in a few minutes. A few other notes. On page 73, you're going to note a series of private investments that are being considered and discussed in our community. Those are for your information so that it gives you a sense of the type of activity that's being considered for our downtown. If any of those progress to the point where investments are required by DMC, we'll provide obviously our detailed project review to you. On page 75, you'll find a summary of the exciting opportunity that DMC has had to administer the DED Main Street Grant Redevalization Grant Program. At the end of 2022, we had recommended nearly $2.5 million in grant awards to 45 projects within our downtown district. Page 77 highlights our district energy updates and describes the scope of that project and its goal to include private development. I think it's very important to recognize that our community is pushing forward to very futuristic energy policies that really could be cutting edge for our community and provide an example for the state in the country. We're also working to identify non-DMC sources of funding for that project, including through Minnesota's congressional delegation, possibility of state bonding, as well as incentives in the recent federal legislation. And then on the final packet, uh, the final page of your board packet, you'll find a description of recent community co-design efforts that the EDA has participated in, where we're working to understand how to make homeownership a reality for those who have historically been excluded from such wealth-building opportunities. Important derivative work that we really feel is rounding out our community efforts. So thanks for your time this morning. I'm happy to address any comments or questions you may have and look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Ottley. A very good report, and we're, we're happy to learn more about the evolution of the membership of the EDA board, and thank you for that introduction to the, to the new members. Are there any questions from the members for Dr. Ottley?
Madam Chair, just a, thank you. Just a comment. Dr. Ottley, I also want to underscore how important it is for, uh, for you to have added those three members. When I looked at connections to Minnesota Chamber, Greater MSP, Medical Alley, all of them really, really underscore the fact that this is a state initiative centered in Rochester that has implications in all parts of Minnesota, and all parts of Minnesota should be doing the lifting on all of this. So I think integrating with those organizations, I sit on the Greater MSP board, and, and it is great to have Mayo's voice represented at, at the top of that organization, but it's also important to have DMC's voice there. And I think what you're doing here is connecting those dots. So really, really pleased by that. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you for that. We look forward to further conversations about all of those matters in our materials yet this morning. So we will go ahead and move along. Patrick, the next item on our agenda is a metric, and the metrics for the plan update.
That's right. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm joined by teammate Catherine Malmberg. As we could get the slide. Okay, so as you know, you've asked us to provide an update each of our meetings around one of the metrics that are a priority for the organization, and there are five metrics that we measure our progress against. And they include private invest, private investment, job growth, tax base, and experience. But guiding all of that is the idea of having a dynamic, uh, current contemporary strategic plan. And so what we intend to do with this particular meeting is give you a little bit of a, of a deep dive into some of the way in which we keep ensure that our, our strategic plan, that is to say, our DMC development plan remains current and, um, and provides a direction as we guide resource allocation. So with that, I'm just going to ask Catherine to lead this report.
To say, why do we plan? What's, what's the intent here with this DMC goal? And really, it's kind of, I view it as a three sort of step process here. First off, it's a way to harness the energy and the ideas and the creativity of the community and all of the stakeholders who participate here and have an impact on downtown Rochester. And through that process, and as you're well aware, we've been trying to innovate by using co-design and other engagement processes to help harness those energies in different ways and allow different people to access where they might be able to, all towards achieving a shared vision that is coming out of harnessing that energy. And that helps us figure out how to guide future investments, right? And so that's why we think this is a really important goal of the DMC initiative, moving forward here. And as you might remember, our foundational document is obviously the DMC Development Plan from 2015. And then as required by the legislation, there is a five-year, every five years, and a formal update is issued. So that first five-year update came out in 2020, and this board reviewed it. And in the process of getting to that update, there were numerous regional and city strategies, different small area plans, and updated market studies that happened along the way that were incorporated into our work and incorporated into that update. So subsequent to 2020, here, I'm trying to highlight a couple of the, and this is not comprehensive, but sort of some of the highlights of in the past two years, what regional and city strategies, area plans, and market studies have occurred, with a reminder that we're headed towards the tenure update in 2025. So you might recognize some of these documents here. We have the, the new Unified Development Code, which was recently passed. So District Energy Planning and Active Transportation Plan Update was just completed at the end of 2022. There's the, uh, the Downtown Riverfront Project, which we will be talking about shortly here, and a couple of the other small area plans, the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor Plan, the Soldier's Field Plan, which we'll be talking about as well. And then there's been numerous market studies, including some housing studies that are being performed and have been completed by the Rochester Coalition. We have some downtown analysis of our residents and also the retail needs in downtown. And then later in this meeting, we'll be talking about another important market study that was just completed. So all of this is to show it's a dynamic, ongoing process where we're constantly, while we're not leading a lot of these initiatives, some of them we are leading, but we're partnering with people and constantly taking in that information, using that to direct our work so that we're aligned. So again, just to conclude here, this image is, you know, the goal here, we're, we're planning for the future, right? Looking ahead, today's youth are the ones that are going to be living the, the realized vision of these plans that we're working on today. That city diet, you know, we always have our foundational 2015 Development Plan Document. It's dynamic. We're trying to incorporate current thinking, and that will help us help you guide our future investments.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from members?
Question, Madam Chair? Just a curious, so do we have a current strategic plan that we're operating under that is distinct from the five-year update that we just completed recently, the development plan update?
No, that five-year update is our guiding strategic document.
Okay.
As we continue to participate in all of these other various sub-plans and regional plans that are going on, but we still use that five-year update as our guiding document.
Okay, thanks.
And just for the benefit of the members, can you also articulate the relationship with the 2015 foundational document?
Oh, certainly. Yes. The 2015 foundational document is the guiding overarching 20-year plan. It contained a lot more detail, fine-grained detail about the first five years, and the requirement that they be an update every five years to reflect new market realities, other plans that have occurred in the interim so that we can be nimble and adjust and respond, rather than, you know, thinking that we know everything at the beginning, that we'll just execute through the 20-year phase.
Thank you. Member Norton.
Yeah, and I, I would just like to really put a fine point on that, what you just said, which is we have looked at the current status of the community. We've looked at updates. We have talked to the community since 2015 in order to update so that we are moving ahead with the current state of affairs. And I think sometimes that gets lost in our discussion. So I just really want to put a fine point on that.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, could I comment too? You know, the, I'm really glad the mayor just added that and really want people representing the local governments to know that I don't think we see, correct me folks if I'm wrong, the 2015 document was not handed to us on stone tablets. It was the best idea at the time of what could happen. And I'm really happy this has evolved. The Soldier Field thing we're going to talk about later is a really good example of that. And to me, the idea is that we should spell out at the beginning what values and overarching themes we want to have, but it, it should evolve. And I, I think the place that we have seen that exercised most is actually in the capital plan. And we, you know, we talked about that a bit at the time, but that's a big document. We talk about our capital plan, but that's where these all intersect, in my mind. And I just want to, Madam Chair, thank the, the staff for doing that because we don't have to look through that capital plan every time and see if it connects to our visions. I really appreciate the fact that you guys are tying that together.
And, and I just want to pick up on that theme as well before we move on. I, I think that the value of the 2015 plan with all the inclusiveness and the brainstorming and the convening that occurred laid out those goals, and this is not inconsistent with that. But clearly in 2015, we're not going to be able to understand where all the opportunities are, how things like pandemic might shift our worldview about priorities. So we updated in five-year increments, not in a way that's inconsistent with that very broad inclusive discussion that generated the 2015 plan, but to give us a best sense of where the key strategies and opportunities might land in this next five years or the current. this next five years or the current and next five years to better achieve the goals that were laid out in that 2015 plan. So I think this work is really critical. What metrics we use to really monitor our project, our our progress on that goal? I think the staff thinking about laying those out is very important, but to keep that visibility in front of the board about how are we doing? Where did we meet our expectations? And where did we have maybe an obstacle or a disruptor that needs some further conversation? So I appreciate your time on this. Member Carlson?
I think it's easy as council members to get hung up on small details of what we do or don't like or hear from the community, what what is liked or disliked about D M C. But this is the real opportunity to have influence, how council can be thinking strategically and helping shape the vision along with our D M C partners and others around the room here to influence the next many years of development in our community. So for me, this is one of the most exciting pieces of my role. And I really hope my council colleagues continue to feel like this is where they can influence the direction of D M C, less so about the small details that everyone can find fault in, but we're learning from.
Thank you, Member Carlson. Member Norton?
Yeah, and just to remind folks that we are now in the middle of that forward five year plan. And in two, little over two years, we're going to be revisiting all of it to say what's happening now and how have things changed? And I suspect we will see significant change between now and 2025 when we at one, one more time, look at it and make adjustments.
Patrick?
And if I could just humanize the timetable a bit. In 2015, an 18 year old who probably wasn't paying attention to what was going on, except their own life is now a 25 year old who is making, who's entering into professional work life and wanting to lead organizations and wanting to shape the community they're in today. And I think that's really what we're experiencing is a generational in shift in terms of thinking.
Thank you, Patrick. A little frightening.
We all stayed the same age. They're staying the 18 year olds.
All right. Well, let's keep moving because I'm very excited about our next two items, which are requests for action. And there are two C I P projects, which we contingently approved at the end of last year as part of our budget deliberations. The first project, Public Realm Enhancement to Soldier's Field, if you remember, was contingent upon staff advancing the project design and rallying community support around a preferred concept. I say staff, but it was a much more inclusive process over these past few months. Staff and other leaders and elected officials, community leaders and elected officials. So a lot of work has been done on that. And I'm very excited to to review the staff report and that proposed action. I understand that staff are prepared to discuss and describe that work to us this morning. But I just want to lay out also the second project, the downtown riverfront was also presented to us in September. That presentation described several next steps and we're, we have staff here today to give us an update on that as well. And then we are being requested to consider action on these two items. So I'll turn it over to Patrick and if you wouldn't mind introducing your colleagues.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you. We are thrilled to be bringing forward to you this action item. We are feel a great deal of enthusiasm for this work and the work that's been going on in the community. I'm going to ask Jamie Rothie, who presented last month along with from the D M C team and Mike Nigbor from the City Parks Department, who you again met last meeting to provide an update and a formal recommendation. So with that, Jamie?
Good morning. It's great to be here again. Wonderful to see you all. So today, we're just going to cover a couple of updates. We want to provide you an update since the last time we were here. Review alignment one more time with the work that's happened since the last time. And then, of course, we're here to request the board to consider and approve the resolution that's before you and in your packet. Just a quick reminder and visual of where the education recreational subdistrict is within our city that's in front of you there. However, update today is to remind you of the request that you sent with us last time we were with you together. You asked us to consider the most minimum impact to the golf course. You also encouraged our team to go deeper into the details regarding aquatics. And that you reminded us that community supported plan was very important. So we shared that details back with our city staff and colleagues and continued down that path and carried that through. And we're excited today to show you a plan that includes all three of those.
As just as Jamie is advancing this, one of the things that we want to do is to make clear, can you do this investment? And secondly, should you do this investment? So as we're walking through this, this is the can we do this? And the next discussion is should we do this?
Thanks, Patrick. So the first conversation around alignment, back to what Patrick was saying is can we do this? We wanted to make sure, can we do it? And so it does lie within the D M C district. It's consistent with our D M C development plan, those documents that we just reviewed together. And it also meets the definition of public infrastructure. So we went into the details of that law and you'll see that stated below. So then we took another lens of should we do this? And the last time we were here, we went deeper in to each of these categories. But we use these lenses to evaluate further and have some really deep discussions as a team to evaluate is this aligning with the D M C vision? And we really believe honestly, through all of these different lenses, that it creates a more usable space for the community and our visitors. And it deeply connects with the surrounding community as well, which are laid before you. So when we talk about equity, inclusivity, accessibility, these are all things that are designed into the project and will stay consistent throughout the design. So with that, I'd like to pass it over to Mike Nigbor to go into a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Board, for having me once again today. I appreciate the time. Let me just start with saying, I think I counted at least six times, community engagement and it connections with the community came up in the conversations already this morning. That was really key to our our whole program for the master plan, as well as for our more recent co-design process to get that community involved in the design and decision making. So with that, I'll just walk through, if you could permit me, the projects that we have on on board here. The first is the very northeast corner, the River Walk area. That's a key component to connect the downtown area to Soldier's Field Park. And then subsequently to the river on that easterly end of the of the park itself. Not only that, though, there's sustainability components along with that and again, connections back to the riverfront project, which we'll hear about just shortly. The East Playground area is an area that's already developed, but it has some severe limitations on accessibility and inclusivity. So again, we're focusing on those kind of aspects in that playground redevelopment activity. The aquatics, what do you say about the aquatics? The current facility is so outdated and so inadequate for our community that the co-design group really took it to heart to say, what do we want for our community? There are a group of members from across the board, young, old, BIPOC, economically diverse. You name it, they're a part of that that co-design process. They really guided this decision making and how this will be laid out and utilized. And again, they took to heart also the impacts on the golf course and to minimize that activity as well. Along with that, then they looked at the nature play area and the West Shelter area. And they had a preferred plan, but again, they wanted a project to move forward. So they chose to go and offer the council an alternative, which the council and park board both chose to do, which is great. We have a project here in front of you to talk about. That west side nature play area and shelter area will again provide a great asset to the community. The last big area is the Southwest Trail Connection. That really provides mobility connections and accessibility for our entire park and the community to get to the downtown area through Soldier's Field Park. Independently, these park, these projects are really good for the park. Together, they are transfer transformational for the entire community, again, for the economics, for visitor population and for our community members. With that, obviously comes a request for funding and we've talked about funding last time we were here. The funding has changed slightly and as you can see, there's a pretty big ticket number here of $20 billion, 20.1 million. And in reality, it's probably pushing $21 million with inflationary factors factoring in by the time we get to midpoint. But really, we're talking about, again, a transformational project to really enhance the community. Where we're going right now, our intention is to be out for bids on the aquatics portion this year. There is some challenges with that. And again, there's a potential that it may be delayed because of permitting processes with the state. We hope we get through those processes in time, but that is a reality we got to live with. But right now, we're looking forward to a 2023 construction project with an opening in 2024 for swimming activities. The remaining projects, the trails, the playgrounds, the shelters will go along with that same timeframe, which will probably be ending later in the year than than that May timeframe though. So 20 through 2023 and first part of 2024, those projects will be completed is the goal. And with that. Jamie?
Thank you, Mike. Patrick?
So just happy to field any questions and would appreciate your consideration of our recommendation to advance financial support for this project to move forward.
Well, we'll open it up for discussion and questions, maybe just a quick question for probably Mike. You had talked about the state permitting process. Is that because of the proximity to the river or what's the?
No.
Clarify the state involvement?
Yeah, great question. So because of the federal dollars, we go through a state historic preservation process. The state historic preservation process is a very lengthy, time consuming process. Every time you make a submittal, it's at least 30 days before they provide a response, whether good, bad or otherwise. We know that there's history at Soldier's Field Park, the structural integrity of all the components, really, there's no history there, but it's the overall design. And that design component may influence how we do things in the entire park, whether the it was central aquatics building, the clubhouse or the bathhouse in the very center of the site, like we have proposed. Or will they say something different? We don't know those answers yet. So we're in that process. We've started the archaeological research part of it. We found nothing out there but an old cow tooth, which is good to hear, but the other cultural side of things for not for the cow, it's been gone a long time, so not to worry. But the cultural side of that historical review is ongoing.
Thank you for that. Members, questions, comments?
I have many comments. Shall I start?
Member Carlson?
Okay, well, first of all, this was received very enthusiastically by city council. We didn't do a formal vote. It was presented in a study session. The preferred alternative plan was well supported, just really enthusiastic asking to make sure we're minimizing all barriers to get this moving forward on our timeline and have it open and available as soon as possible as a tremendous asset for the community. So I have a number of notes. I'm going to try to be concise. I maybe should have organized them better, but here we go. This is so beneficial to our broader community. It's beneficial to surrounding neighborhoods. It's beneficial to downtown, our visitors, our residents downtown. It is accessible by active transportation and public transportation. It is meeting the the interests of so many different stakeholder audiences in our community. For those who live nearby, for those who are golf enthusiasts, for those who really demand and need more basketball courts. It contributes to making our playgrounds more accessible, which is a tremendous need and tremendous asset in our downtown. We did this through a process that was thoughtful, that brought all those considerations and perspectives together to come up with the very best plan. And best of all, in my perspective, is that we're proposing this in a way that brings multiple layers of investment together to make this a reality. So not only D M C funding, which we're, I'm tremendously grateful for, but having federal investment and and thanks to our parks department for pursuing that so thoughtfully and our local referendum dollars, which were so broadly supported by the community. So there's just a lot of buy in, but wanted to add one other comment just from the city perspective. And I see our administrator here and some of our other community leaders or city leaders. I think this was a, from my perspective, a really new way of the city working internally together as well. Not only across the parks board and the city council, but for administration to work differently and make sure that our internal conversations were well supported across departments. And this was really a collaborative effort internally to make it happen as well. So it's really nice as a, as council who oversees our city leadership to see that they are being as thoughtful and productive and dealing with really hard challenges internally in new ways as well.
Thank you, Member Carlson. Member Norton?
And I'll just add on an additional plus, which was you, the the board here has heard us talk about co-design before. And it's something the city has been embracing. And we were really pleased that the park went beyond just traditional survey methodologies to really do a full co-design process, which really did, as Mr. Nigbor mentioned, it really did reach out into a broad swath of our community to get input from them. And it's, it really is something the city of Rochester is embracing. And it's maybe taken a little longer to get into each department. And we were just thrilled to have the the park department embrace that and bring that forward too. So.
If I may make one comment, we just didn't seek their input, by the way. We actually gave them the, we empower them to make the decisions on what they want to have for the aquatics area and the nature play area. So it was their plan, not ours.
Member Williams?
Yeah, I just thank you, Madam Chair. I I think this is just fabulous and and I love the the community engagement process. I'm just curious, and I probably should know this, has the referendum already taken place? And okay, and is it additional sales tax as the
It's not sale tax, it's additional tax levy essentially.
Yeah, okay. Great. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Member Ryback?
Um, yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. This is a really big deal at this moment because of a couple of things. One is that I think from the beginning, we've recognized that while we are trying to build economic vitality in the center of the air of the city. One of the unique aspects of Rochester is that it's an incredibly green recreation area within, but certainly not including the few blocks in the center of town. I can say this as somebody who tried to ride from my in-laws' house, ride my bike to an appointment at the clinic. And I had an incredibly wonderful ride down the river and all that, and then I almost got killed. This idea of this trail connection, river that we're coming up to, this is, this is really big deal. The second reason I think is even more important and it's, I have to correct a misstatement I made earlier. I referred to this as a state initiative. This is a partnership between the state, the city and county and the residents of Rochester. It's a partnership. And if you think about this, for those of us who are appointed as statewide reps, the chair, members Baker and Campbell. Part of our job here is to decide, why should the state of Minnesota make an investment in Rochester uniquely? Every city in the state would love $10 million for a pool. Why should we representing the state say that Rochester deserves $10 million for a pool? I can say that easily because I can say Rochester is extremely unique. The opportunity we have with Destination Medical Center to grow the assets of Mayo, to diversify the economy, to make this a more livable city, to create, attract more talent. This is a great, smart, $10 million investment by the state of Minnesota in a very local pool. That's a great thing. I do hope it's also remembered by the people of Rochester bluntly because this wonderful city where I have a lot of people I know who often say to me, well, you know, D M C is great for the people downtown, but it doesn't have anything to do with me. Yeah, Soldier's Field Pool is going to have a lot to do with a lot of people in this town, so will the work that we're doing on the riverfront. So as somebody representing this, the state who's going to get back on 52 when this is done, I do want to kind of sheepishly say to the community of Rochester, please note the state is putting $10 million into a local pool here because we see statewide significance. But yes, Destination Medical Center has a huge impact on people in Rochester who don't come into the center of town. So I very, very much look forward to the opportunity to vote yes on a great, smart investment that we're making.
I I want to echo many of those comments, Member Ryback. I spent some time with Patrick on the phone talking through this opportunity. And particularly, it was helpful in many regards, but particularly as compared to some of the, what you read in the media about the work that's been advancing in Soldier's Field. The the articulation of the edges and the connectivity to other areas and the opportunity to really leverage the asset that Soldier's Field has been historically for this community by enhancing the sense of connection to the river, to the trail and connecting other neighborhoods in the community. And we often talk about D M C, about the downtown and creating that as an amenity and bringing people downtown. But the the interesting thing I think about this is this is really not not making sure there's a strong connection for people already downtown to the area of Soldier's Field. But one of the unique aspects of this is people in this community know how to get to Soldier's Field. There is a purpose for them and a benefit to getting to Soldier's Field. And I almost think of this as kind of a reverse gateway for those broader community residents who often think in Rochester, like many other downtowns, I go there when I have a specific need. It's not really a place that I think of as increasing my sense of enjoyment or the range of opportunities. But I go to the downtown when I need to. This creates an easy access by emphasizing This creates an easy access by emphasizing those edges with other areas of the community. And I, I just really love the idea of thinking of this as a reciprocal relationship about taking a jewel in this community that is so valued and increasing the usefulness of that space to a broader section of Rochester residents, but also getting them to the doorstep and maybe even luring them to explore other parts of our zone, if you will. And to understand downtowns do have a lot of amenities and assets that create enjoyment and add value for everyday life. So thank you for your time, Patrick, and working through some of those questions. And I really appreciate the addition of the map to really illustrate that this is an aquatic center, but so much more as well for Soldier's Field and for the community.
I'll just add.
Number ten.
Thank you. Well, kudos to Mike and everybody involved in this project. It looks great. I look forward to supporting it. And oftentimes, when you're talking to people, they, in the community, they, they think DMC is something that happens to them instead of something that happens for them. And this is an example where DMC is working for them. And we're getting $21 million worth of amenities for this community for $7 million of local spending. So thank you.
Yeah, well said.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution in your packet?
Move approval second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we take the roll, I just want to acknowledge the members that are here virtually and make sure there are no additional comments before we move to the roll call. Okay, seeing none, I would ask Kayla to call the roll.
Member Baker.
Aye.
Indicated yes. Member Campbell.
Aye.
Indicated yes. Member Carlson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
Aye. In fact, aye, aye, aye. Very happy.
Member Tyne.
Aye.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the very broad. Okay, Patrick, can we move to the riverfront?
Thank you. We're excited to present another item for your consideration and request for action. And it revolves around the work that's been going on on the riverfront. I'll ask Catherine Malmberg, who you met and know from our team, and Cindy Steinhauser, Deputy City Administrator. Cindy has been the lead point person, our partner on the riverfront development. I'll let the two of them walk through where we are and what our request is of you.
Great. So as we did with the prior project, we're going to first talk about can we invest? Can you as a board support this project? And then we will present why we think this is the right project to support. So just as a refresher from the request in your packet, you'll see we're asking for $800,000 of financial support to advance the downtown riverfront project. And those funds will be used for both land acquisition, which is Cindy will speak about the negotiations with the county. And then the design and engineering costs to advance environmental information and work with the Army Corps of Engineers and other things. These resources, as a reminder, are in the prior approved 2023 CIP budget that this board reviewed last year and approved last year.
Madam Chair.
Member Ryback.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask a question early on and see if somehow in this you could answer that. When you go back to that, if you could just go back one slide, you see land acquisition, design, engineering. You don't see recreation. And I wonder if in this you could educate us on what is, is there a potential to ever have more paddle boarding on it or ice skating on it? I don't know if we have the, I at least don't have the full knowledge of whether the scope of this could actually be about how do people use the water along with the land? So at some point in there, if you could help with that.
Sure.
Thanks for allowing me to do that, Madam Chair.
Certainly. I believe we will address that. And so look forward to that conversation. So as a reminder, in order to be an eligible project, it must be within the DMC district, consistent with the DMC development plan and meet the definition of public infrastructure. So you can see the location, the blue outlines. This, both of these properties are part of the downtown waterfront sub-district within the DMC. These are the authorized uses. This is good old section 46940 subdivision 11 that outlines allowable public infrastructure expenses. And now I'm going to hand it over to my colleague at the city, Cindy Steinhauser, to walk us through the details.
Great. Thank you. Excited to be here today. Thank you, Catherine. So what you have before you is what I can now say is an award-winning plan. This journey began in 2021 when we brought on Gamble and Associates to engage in a very active community process to deliver a plan that both this board and the city council unanimously adopted. So what you see before you hear is what we were talking about, the redevelopment of approximately not quite six acres. To the left of the screen is the west side, about two and a half acres. To the right of the screen is what we call the east side. It's just roughly about three acres. And it contemplates a mixed use. It has both riverfront activation, commercial, residential, and specifically, Member Ryback, to your question, as you can see on the drawing before you hear, some of the riverfront activation features include contemplate things like a kayak launch. If you look to on the right-hand side, where we have lots of riverfront terracing down to touch the river is where we contemplate kayak launching, also terrace seeding and some of passive, both intentional and passive recreation that can happen. On the west side, you see, for example, the movie on the screen is a concept, creating a mini little island out there so people can get even further into the river in a safe way, of course, and experience it in a way that you're not likely to experience on the land side. So really great plan. It capitalizes on the unique features, not only the proximity to the river, but really capitalizes on its relationship to the historic downtown and the cultural amenities that surround it. It brings both sites to a higher, more compatible use. And I would argue it leverages the investment that you just approved for Soldier's Field because it creates this really nice triangulation of access to these really great amenities in our community. Well, we began this process, as I said, it was a very, very intensive engagement effort that delivered, what you see here is five themes that are the foundation to this plan. This extensive process again capitalized on the co-design toolkit and co-design process that the DMC team brought to this community. Lots of listening session, focus groups, many interim activations. You recall the DMC board meeting two years ago that helped bring to light the potential of this area. And it also capitalizes on, and, and the engagement process really helped us address the conversation that was happening in the community around competing interests for these areas, both in terms of what they'd like to see in redevelopment. And really, it's a testament to David Gamble and his team and the sub consultants that they brought on because they really embraced the co-design process and our message to say this has to be a community plan. So.
Would you, Cindy, would you just go back one, one more slide? And I also note, Madam Chair, that Jim Campbell has his hand up, so.
Thank you, Patrick. Member Campbell.
Can you hear me? I just had a question. I've heard discussion about the dam on Silver Lake. And, and, and I don't really need an answer to this now, but I'm just curious about the status of, and the decisions as it relates to the dam and, and, and how the, the removal or the replacement thereof really affects the flow of the river through this area.
Patrick?
Think I would, I'm going to defer to Cindy or one of the the mayor or the city council president on, on that, but it's an active conversation. And so Cindy, maybe you can.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you for the question. As Patrick said, it is an active conversation. Obviously, we don't have final decisions on what is contemplated at Silver Lake. But what I can say is that our conversations, even the preliminary conversations that we've had with the Corps of Engineers that relates to this location, is that we're very much aware that there could potentially be an impact, maybe small, likely small, because of the way the channel turns here, it really slows everything down. So we're, we're very aware of it. Our team is very aware of it. David Gamble is very aware of it. And it will not be lost in the conversation and in the planning.
Thank you.
And so before we go any further, I want to just distinguish this request in front of you from the last one. So in the last plan, when you saw images, Soldier's Field, you saw images like this type of images, those are, those are ready to put a shovel in the ground and, and advance. This is concept level design at this stage yet. And we're asking for the additional engineering and design work to figure out what actually can be built, how it can be built, and working with the Army Corps of Engineers. And if any of you have worked with the Army Corps of Engineers, you know that they carry guns. And so they are, they are, they are an authority that we need to work with. And so it's, there's a lot of work to be done, but I just want to be clear as we look at this image that this is not shovel-ready projects.
Member Norton.
Yeah, and I'm particularly interested in this. In 2019, when I became mayor, I was approached by the Mayor's Institute for City Design. And this was before DMC got involved in this. And I worked with Josh Johnson, who is associated with DMC, to help me select some property to take to the Mayor's Institute, which is a group of architects and designers. And this was the, and actually, we debated at the time about do we take the land to the left or to the right? Which piece do we take? And we ultimately decided that we should treat it as a district. And so I took this as a start before we got here to the Mayor's Institute for City Designs to get their ideas about what we could do. And it ended up being put on the table, which was kind of disappointing for me, having, you know, gotten all these great ideas and then come back, but we weren't ready yet to move this piece along. So while this is somewhat different, it really does incorporate many of the same ideas. And I know Mr. Gamble took that report and looked at the suggestions. And I see some of it in here, and I see some other ideas that weren't, that are really exciting. So I just wanted to say for me, as you know, a new mayor in 2019 was really excited to do something. This was one of the some things that I started to do, and we are now starting to realize that. And so I'm particularly interested between this and discovery walk and going into the park. These are issues I took on early on, and I'm really excited to see where they've come. So I wanted to just mention that and, and I encourage you to continue on because I'm interested to learn more from Mr. Gamble and DMC.
Great, thank you. And so when we were asked before you, you gave some really great, clear direction. Continue to advance the recommendations out of this plan specifically. Look at further negotiations to consolidate ownership of property so that it could lead to further development. And specifically advancing, as Patrick said, these are concepts, and so we need to advance design and delve into more civil engineering work. In addition to Corps of Engineer, we will anticipate we'll have to be working with DNR as well as SHPO. So lots of layers of integration at the state and federal level when it comes to evolving this plan. And so what we have before you today, and I think Catherine and Patrick are going to speak to it, is we have negotiated an agreement with this, with the county. They've been great to work with. We appreciate the county team. The council did approve that on Monday night. And we also have a proposal from David Gamble, Gamble and Associates, to advance this work along with a local team that he has assembled that I think is really going to help take this to our end goal, which is to pursue developer solicitation at the end of this year for a developer who really buys into the, the design of this plan that was, the, the concepts in this plan that was truly a community-designed plan.
Patrick, any?
So with that, yeah, we'll open the floor for conversation, and we would like to advance this recommendation.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Questions or comments? Member Ryback?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I want to go back to recreation for a second. And first off, one of the, I want to underscore that the mayor wasn't just, I want to validate that the mayor's been talking about the river. It was the very first conversation you and I had as mayor was one of them included this whole issue. When we were originally working on, like the very first year of Destination Medical Center, we looked at winter uses and Buffalo had done some cool things on the river. And there was an image of skating, and that was great. About that time, I went to Ottawa. And Ottawa has this amazing multi-mile river you can skate on. I thought, cool, I'll bring that back to Minneapolis, talk about it in Rochester. Let's just get that done. Well, then I found out Ottawa does not have a river. It's a canal. So there, this is going back to Member Campbell's point, they can control the water. The reason this is relevant in the winter is because what they do is they, at night, when it's cold, they lower it just a quarter inch, letting a little water go on it. It's just like a Zamboni. And so you can literally commute in Ottawa on that. If you think about that and what that could actually do, and if we're thinking about dams, I honestly think we should take a look at that. I think Warroad's gotten, am I right? Is it Warroad that's gotten so much attention about this? That you escaped from Warroad to Rosso? I don't know whether that's.
That little angle, the northwest angle, that they, they couldn't have access through, you have to go through Canada. So they created their own road.
Yeah. Now, let's look at Destination Medical Center. If I'm going to get a medical procedure in Cleveland or Phoenix, I'm not going to be skating in the winter. The negative part that is often put, ask the male people with their surveys, how many people talk about the cold in the winter as being a detriment? What if that was a big amenity as part of this? So I don't want to get too, you know, wildly futuristic on this. This is a very seemingly achievable thing if we're talking about dams here. So I'm just encouraging, again, I don't see recreation as a big, I see land use, which is awesome. But I do think the recreational component of this in winter too has some real potential.
I, Member Norton.
Well, I'll just say, the, the original design that, that MICD suggested was a building that had sledding off the building in a step down into the.
Love that.
So that was actually one of their suggestions, which is based off a ski, I think in Norway or somewhere where you can ski off one of their waste energy or plants or something. So it was a takeoff of that.
It's in Hammerby Schulstedt in Stockholm.
There you go.
And it's a, it's basically, they take the garbage from the city, pile it up, create a mountain, and you ski down it. So I don't take that for what it's worth.
So the, the ideas just never end here, right? I do want to acknowledge your opening comments that this is at a very preliminary stage, but I think this is exactly the right time to get some of this type of feedback from the members. I would only maybe echo or build on Member Ryback's comments about even, even programmed versus passive use of the space. And thinking about kind of the intensity of summer and is there adequate shade? And the cold in winter, is there protection from wind? Is there a warming house for anyone that's going to sled or skate or a changing room? And I looked at that map and thought, I wonder where the public restrooms are going to be around this. But the bigger issue, I think, is the connection, particularly from this building. And this is a gathering place as well in the community. I, I think it's just remarkable that, that for so many American cities, as we, many of us know from Minneapolis and St. Paul, that we turned our back on the river. And so really being more intentional about thinking of this as an asset and creating connectivity, both in a programmed way and for people who might have, you know, an hour or two between some sessions at a, a meeting in this building. So I really applaud the really innovative, creative, thoughtful, long-term thinking that's behind this plan. And I, I look forward to seeing it when it's even more fleshed out, if you will, when it comes back to us for an additional funding request. Member Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend not to spend a lot of time outside in the winter. I'll just comment on the summer, and I love the terrorist seating. And if you have been downtown Chicago and seen their terrorist steps and seating along, you know, through the heart of a very obviously dense downtown environment, it is absolutely vibrant. And on a summer day, it's a fantastic community gathering experience. So I, I love some of those, some of those design elements in this.
I keep wanting to call you commissioner, Member Tyne.
That's fine. I, I like this plan and concept. I do have some concerns about, well, in summertime, is this, is this river deep enough to really use? And what are we going to do if it's not? Are we going to look at dredging? I mean, there's, there's times it's really, it's really low and it's not, not as attractive as we'd like it, as it looks on the paper there. So we ought to look at that if we're going to invest a lot of, a lot of dollars in this area. I'm also concerned, are there business opportunities to serve the people? If we have a successful, successful plan here and it goes into the action, are we going to have opportunities for bars and restaurants to serve the people that are down there?
Yeah.
And I don't know that this river freezes hard enough to ice skate in the winter.
Details. Details.
It's good to think.
But it's shallow.
Limited liability. Did I see another hand with member Carlson?
Yes, I will just uh say thank you to county and city leadership for coming to an agreement and allowing this to move forward. And it's really exciting. This is just part of our way of connecting all the dots and and our influence in downtown and all the way hopefully to Silver Lake. So.
So member Carlson, I'll invite you to make a motion for approval.
Sure, more approval.
Is there a second?
Very slick.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Kayla, would you do the roll call?
Certainly, member Baker.
Aye.
Signifying I, member Campbell. Signifying I, member Carlson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
Aye.
Member Tyne.
Aye.
Chair Weelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for all the work to bring both of those items forward. We're very uh obviously excited about that with our unanimous support from the board. Let's keep moving on our agenda. We're exactly on time. Uh, and so Patrick, I'll turn it over to you. Our next items are transportation and downtown economic updates.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, we have um two uh brief updates. Um, I believe they're brief updates, but um one uh relates to the progress we're making on Link Bus Rapid Transit and the West Transit Village. And I'll invite uh Catherine and Cindy to um co-present in that, in that segment. And then we'll be hearing from Jamie Rothie regarding the work we're doing with the downtown community and and we'll hear that uh coming up next.
Hey, thank you. And uh I know Cindy, start us off, please. Uh, as we mentioned at our last board meeting, we are really in a heads-down work period right now. So this will be a pretty succinct update on the Link project.
Heads down and nose to the grindstone is a great way to describe this project. It's uh an amazing project. So uh really quickly, an update on where we're at on the project schedule. As you can see, we're at sixty percent planned design. We're doing all those um regulatory approval processes like the NEPA completion. Um, we've begun a solicitation for uh an appraisal consultant to bring on board once we clear NEPA so that we can begin negotiations on right-of-way acquisition that's going to be needed to be um with the goal of starting that this fall. So we stay in cadence with our timeline, um anticipate design being complete uh later this year. Um, one other milestone date that's not on here is we anticipate our uh revised FTA rating in May from our resubmital. Uh, we've had really favorable conversations with the FTA. We anticipate a great rating, so I'm excited about that.
Cindy, before you move on, can you just remind us another is what NEPA stands for?
National Environmental Protection Agency Review, something like that. But it's an environmental review process. Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner or Chair Weelock. Uh, but it's a, it's a regulatory process that also includes um SHIPO review, State Store Preservation Office review. Other milestones that we are at, um, again, we had the really uh huge landmark approval of the uh services agreement that was in August of last year. We are currently meeting weekly with the Mayo team on some other sub-agreements that we need to have in place by July of this year to continue to advance. That includes the construction agreement uh when we build this project as well as shared use agreement post operations. Um, and again, mentioned um the real estate and right-of-way, all of those required by July twenty-first, so we stay on our timeline. We will begin this year procurement process. One of the major items is the procurement of the EV uh buses and chargers. Uh, it is roughly a eighteen to month to twenty-four month delivery, and we need those six months in advance of the project so we can continue to, um, so we can test and commission. So we anticipate bringing to you in May um uh concepts on the, on the uh recommendations regarding the bus. As we understand, it's an important item for you and we want to make sure you have input on that experience, that ridership experience from the vehicle procurement perspective. So that'll be coming in May and then we will be turning that around and beginning that procurement process um shortly thereafter. That and over to Catherine.
Thank you, Cindy. So this is a brief update on the West Transit Village. Uh, so this board has charged us with the vision for a true transit village uh hub to occur at the west end of the BRT Phase One line. And um I'm excited to say that in collaboration with Mayo and our city partners that we uh Mayo has identified a preferred development partner and is in uh negotiations with that partner. Um, and so right now that we are going to short, in short order, be kicking off some conceptual work to ensure that we're all aligned on the vision. And we will be carrying the vision that this board has charged us with forward into that process. Um, because this uh needs to dovetail nicely with the overall uh federal process for the BRT line and the transit infrastructure that also needs to happen on the West Transit Village site. So that's the update on West Transit Village.
So Madam Chair, just to say, there is uh no action being requested by the board at this time. We want to foreshadow some things. So in May, we will come here to talk about um the bus design specifications and gain your input. So as the same, the city is putting together their um bus procurement, they have the benefit of your um desires with respect to the vehicle itself and the, and uh what you expect or hope to see out of the vehicles. We put that out to bid. The West Transit uh Village, again, foreshadowing um that that conversation is now going to advance not only between the city, DMC, and um and and Mayo Clinic, the property owner, but we now have onboard a uh development team. I don't mean to be too opaque. I'm not going to be able to say who the development team is, but to say that it is a team with uh significant experience in doing development, partnering with an affordable housing developer and a high-quality um architecture, architecture and engineering firm as part of that team. And they came, they've come to um a point where they are committed to realize our vision for a transit hub. Um, but a lot of work to be done between um uh where we are today and uh and 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 that happening. But we now have um all of the team members in place to do that.
Uh, so thank you for that. Appreciate the update. And since this will be back on our May agenda, I appreciate the interim update now, but I think let's keep moving and see if we can hold for a longer discussion when we have that next substantive item on our agenda in the future.
Thank you.
So can we do the update on the Downtown Vibrancy Task Force?
Uh, yes, um, thank you, um, members. Um, three years ago, at the outset of the pandemic, this board um asked us to um adjust the work we are doing to be as responsive as possible to the the crisis of the pandemic, not fully um knowing all of the implications that it would have, but you recognized that our work might need to change um during that period of time. Um, we indeed did, there's a remote here. Uh, we, we did, in fact, and we've reported back to you, uh, and you've supported many steps that we've been involved with. As we are entering, I think, a more normalized period, um, uh, if if not uh fully endemic stage, um, but a more normalized period, we realized we need to shift our work to think about how we can um be supportive to our downtown as a destination and as as a place for experience. So we have been working with the mayor, with the city and others, and I'll let Jamie, I don't want to steal your presentation, Jamie. Um, and we want to let you know where we are today and the work that we are doing. Again, no ask of you today. Um, but I know many of you have experiences in downtowns elsewhere and you might have um advice and recommendations to share with us.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm excited to share progress with you and the conversations that we're having with our community. As Patrick mentioned, downtown Rochester, like most downtowns, have had impact, um impacts by the pandemic um that have cost um caused um long-lasting pattern changes. People are choosing to shop differently, work differently, their activities differently. And we want to take this time intentionally to come together to solve those. We've been having a lot of individual conversations with different groups, and what we want to do is bring them all together so that we can all solve the problem together and work together for those solutions. So we're taking a bit of a different approach. So I want to give you just a little bit of background, um, touch base on the current work, um, and then talk about next steps today. So as Patrick mentioned, we were before you once before during crisis mode, when that was happening across the world. Um, organizations that helped to support downtowns were coming together to do just that. Um, and that's when DMC, the city and other organizations came together for Rochester Ready. Right now, we feel like we're in recovery mode. We know this is going to last for some time, but it's still important that we're doing active work with our community um to understand what's needed, what can we respond to today, and how can we use that to help us think about the future to create then a more resilient downtown uh moving forward. So as Patrick mentioned, Rochester Ready came together. The organizations are listed um above, and it was a wonderful opportunity to again come together to problem solve and to respond really quickly. Um, there's a few actions that are listed here. Uh, you might recall um outdoor dining accelerated permitting happened. There were um improvements to um this organization um helped to uh purchase the Jersey barriers that created the outdoor seating and a variety of other things to help keep our downtown vibrant uh during the pandemic. So now we're coming together uh to talk about recovery. And so these same organizations have come together to form the downtown task force. Um, our goal is to work with our downtown stakeholders um to help identify what are their immediate um challenges that are happening in the community and how can we can again come together to solve those. So the scope of our work is to create an action plan that does just that, to identify short-term, immediate, short-term and long-term actions. We don't just want to plan and say these are the things. We actually want to get into action. We're also using an accelerated model to identify these. So our goal is to identify this action plan in ninety days. We've spent a lot of time meeting with other cities to understand how did they develop their action plans? Um, what are they doing in their cities? And we really feel in order to move forward quickly, we want to build that beginning part of the action plan together quickly, move into action, then reiterate it as we go on, because we know we're going to have to continue to grow and change. We want to also focus on what the current needs are and the future needs are, and in three different lenses, both in a strong business district, the neighborhood of downtown and a destination. All three of these have to come together in order for us to have a successful downtown in the future. So next steps in our ninety days, we're actively working on our stakeholder engagement. Just yesterday, we started rolling out our communication strategy um where we started talking about uh work sessions that'll be happening over the next thirty days. In April, after we go through those work sessions, we'll come back together to identify what those major themes are that we're hearing. And we'll invite all of our stakeholders back to do some um work sessions with not only the task force groups, but our community members to solve for those problems. So I'm going to give uh just uh some examples of how that will work. So we have three in-person and one virtual session where we've asked community stakeholders to come together. There'll be facilitated sessions um where we'll draw out and be able to listen to together all of those concerns of the downtown. Then during that process, together, we will identify what those themes are, what are the major themes? So if it's parking or other issues. So once we have those themes, then we'll, we'll all come back together and we'll identify different work sessions underneath those themes. We'll ask the um organizations that can have an impact on those themes, plus stakeholders that are interested in those themes to come up with the solutions for what those issues are. And we'll move those into actions really quickly. We'll identify timelines, resources and people responsible. So we're really excited about this work and uh we'll be getting going in just a couple of weeks. Um, and we'll report back to you as we make progress.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. Uh, I, it's part of a conversation recently at the Federal Reserve and uh we had, I had talked to some folks who are working in in downtown areas in the, in the Twin Cities and I think this, this sentence here that downtowns will need to continue to adjust, I think, is absolutely true. And part of the conversation was, um, there's still a lot of reshuffling going on and and the return to office and downtown workers and Rochester, obviously, with with Mayo is unique in terms of its presence downtown. Uh, but the comment was made, we're, we're still worried about having downtown workers here during the day, but you can't get a bar stool at night. Uh, and entertainment and 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 uh venues, sporting is, is packed. And so there's, there's kind of this both and reality, it seems, going on in I think a lot of downtowns and I suspect, and that the comments that I got were really that this is going to continue, you know, the, especially the the office workers and and the the change in the way that folks are working is just going to continue to be a reality. Um, especially with kind of larger building office spaces.
It's great feedback. The comments, member Ryback, did you?
Yeah, I mean, I, first off, I think this is great work. I have a bunch of thoughts on downtowns all around, but I think one of the things um about Rochester that's unique is obviously that you can't do a whole lot of surgery unless the doctor is present and so is the patient. But, you know, obviously, this is also a place with a big office court. Uh, the biggest initiative that cities are taking around the country is converting your office to housing. And I think sort of if you think about that or you think about hotels that may have outlived their usefulness, converting to housing and all of that. But, you know, this is not at, this is a very, very, very important issue. We should be very involved in it. I will also say Rochester is fortunate to not be in as serious a shape as most other downtowns in the country on this.
Uh, thank you. We look forward to hearing more about the results of this work and your findings. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for having me.
Let's move on to the EDA Work Plan Implementation, page sixty-three of your Board Packet, the Business Development Market Research. Patrick?
Thank you. As I'm being joined by colleagues Mike Flynn and Chris Shad. Um, this is a um presentation that we are looking forward to advancing and looking forward to the discussion. And um as you uh listen to this presentation, listen to it from a lens of um our goal was to understand what people, their awareness that the market and the market being uh life science companies and real estate site selectors who work on behalf of life science companies, what they are, how they are aware of Rochester, what they perceive about Rochester. And then irrespective of that, what matters to them as they are thinking about growth or expansion in terms of a location. And uh a punchline that um you will see and and Mike will underscore is that eighty percent, eighty-two percent of the companies we talk to are looking to expand or grow. Only nine percent have ever considered Rochester as a, as an option. So that represents huge opportunity. I'm stealing Mike's thunder.
Thank you.
And now, um, if you will, uh indulge us to uh walk through um some of the findings and and um and key takeaways, but most importantly, how does that matter to us from our work plan, the work we're doing? Uh, we believe we're directing our work in a way that responds to this. Um, and we want to share that, but we also expect that you will have insights and ideas as well. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate the time. Um, got a lot to cover, so I will jump right in. Um, you know, want to start out with sort of what the objective of this whole conversation was, and it was really lined up around three things. One is to understand where the market currently resides in the minds of potential customers. And the important reason to do that is as we build a program and we work that program over the next few years, we want to be able to figure out if it's working or not. Are we moving the needle on uh the level of awareness people have? And can we reverse engineer? What is the most efficient way to do that? So what are the messages? Where should we be? Ultimately, how do we spend our program dollars as efficiently as possible? So the first was to understand the baseline. The second was to understand what people thought of this market, good, uh, bad and and inaccurate. So the good things we want to emphasize, the bad things we want to figure out how to deal with and the misperceptions, we want to start to educate on those so that we can convert people to a more uh accurate perception. And then lastly, we want to understand for our key customers, what, how do they frame their decisions so that we can sort of build messages and and storytelling along those lines? Um, why we think this is important? Um, DMC has a a goal in the development plan to create thirty thousand new jobs over the next twenty years. And the math tells us that if we just rely on organic growth from within, that's going to be a hard number to achieve. So we know in order to achieve that goal, we have to um either rapidly increase the rate at which organic growth happens or start to import new employment in. We take the task of of importing new jobs in uh for us to be successful, if we want to do that efficiently and if we want to be in the right places with the right messages. Um, data is going to inform that decision. It's going to make us more effective in that effort. So really to achieve one of the foundational goals of DMC, we really need to understand sort of where this market sits to do that uh reasonably well. Uh, thinking of who we talked to, so there were really two groups we looked at. The first were uh executive decision-makers of high-growth life science companies. These are companies that are raising money. Uh, publishing papers, patenting ideas, doing things that are indicative of growth or indicative of scale. Uh, primarily in US, Canada and Europe. And the second was this group that we refer to as connectors. These are people that that inform and influence this process. So people in a corporate real estate role and a tax and advisory role. Um, uh, location advisory services, life science advisory services, sort of a whole hodgepodge of people that are opinion makers and influencers in that space. So um, we conducted uh sort of a joint survey targeting both groups uh separately. Um, some of the methodology that went into this, we started with some local listening sessions, talking to partners on what they thought we should identify. So people from Some of the methodology that went into this, we started with some local listening sessions, talking to partners on what they thought we should identify. So people from the city, from ready, broaden the region, talk to people at deed and greater MSP and other groups locally to get their input. We identified 10 participants from our two audiences and did a series of in-depth interviews. So hour-long sort of open-ended interviews where the conversation could sort of go where their mind was. And then we used information from those first two steps to build a quantitative survey. It took about 10 to 15 minutes to complete. We didn't send participants to go through the process. And then on the back end of that, we had a consultant that helped us scrub the data and do some of this analysis. So I think very sound methodology sort of got us to this point. So the first thing is Patrick mentioned, we want to understand his awareness. What do people know about this market? To what level are they aware of this market? And sort of what direction should we be going? So we asked awareness questions on three different audiences. The first or excuse me, three different objects. The first was the clinic. What are, are they aware of Mayo Clinic as an organization? Second was, are they aware of Rochester as a place to do business, as a place to invest? And the third were, was are they aware of Destination Medical Center as an economic development agency that can help facilitate investment? We're interested in awareness also because it's sort of the first step of the process. We need to get a customer here. So first we have to make them aware we exist. Second, we have to get them to consider us for an investment. And if we can do that well enough, eventually we'll convert them over to, to placing an investment here. So this is sort of the big part of the funnel. And you can see 31% for the market, almost 80% for Mayo, 5% for DMC. The question is, we've rolled this out that, that we get a lot from people is what, where should we be at? And that's sort of a hard answer to give. What I can tell you is having worked in other markets and done similar work like this, it's not unreasonable to sort of be in that 90% plus or minus range. And, and really what we're saying there is of your target customer are 90% of them aware of you as a place to make an investment. So it's not a tremendously high bar to just have them be aware. And so I think as a, as a, as a region, as a city, you know, that number is going to vary based on where you're at, what sort of air cover do you get from your state economic development partners plays a lot into that. So there's a lot of variables that affect this. But I think the general takeaway here is we need to move that number to the right. We need to be doing things to make more of our target audiences aware of the fact that we exist as a place to make an investment.
Mike, can I just interrupt and ask, when you talk about the awareness for Mayo at 79%, is that specifically about Mayo's presence in Rochester? Or is that a more generic awareness of Mayo Clinic?
It is a more generic awareness of, are you aware of Mayo Clinic as a healthcare institution? Questions are really phrased, are you aware of Mayo Clinic as, as a healthcare institution? Are you aware of Rochester as a community in which you could do business? And are you aware of Destination Medical Center as an economic development agency? So the next thing that I guess was illuminating for me was we asked questions then about, okay, if you are aware of an entity, what are your feelings about that entity? And obviously with DMC's awareness being fairly low and the city's awareness being fairly low, the sample size wasn't big enough to get sort of a positive or negative perception. But with Mayo Clinic being at the 79%, we could ask that question. And of the site selection sort of connector community, we asked if the question was, do you have very positive or somewhat positive feelings? See 96% due towards the clinic on the, on the site selection end and 90% on the executive end. The consultant that we have that helped us with this does this type of work all over the world on communities and private businesses. And these are sort of mind bogglingly high numbers for positive awareness. And it's important for us because I think as a, as an entity connected to this and as a community connected to this, there's an opportunity for us to benefit from what is very high awareness and overwhelmingly positive awareness. So three key takeaways we want to leave here. First of all, there's just, you know, sort of bottom line, very low awareness of DMC and of Rochester as a place to do business. Therefore, we need to be out more doing things that build on that awareness. We need to be in more markets with more messages more frequently. The second is, as I mentioned, an unbelievably high level of awareness of Mayo Clinic and overwhelmingly positive. We as the city and we as DMC, we have to figure out how to leverage that to our benefit. So how do we bask in that glow a little bit more, obviously, so that some of that positivity reflects on us? And the third is, and there's a little bit of nuance here. We need to educate audiences on what Mayo means to their business. So there is the takeaway from this that people know about Mayo Clinic and they have a very positive view of Mayo Clinic. As we sort of tease that out in the survey, what becomes obvious is they don't really know what it means from a business perspective to have Mayo Clinic in this community. One respondent commented, isn't it just a really big hospital? And, and the answer is yes, it is a big hospital, but it's, it's a dozen other things that are really important to business in terms of the expertise that's here, that is here, the innovation that takes place here, the facilities that are here. All of these things are not understood in the way they need to be understood to these audiences. And so we know they know Mayo, we know they think it's an excellent organization, but we need to educate them on, on what exactly that means from a business perspective. So next, if awareness is sort of step one, then consideration is step two. So they know we exist. Now are they looking at us for investment? Patrick sort of stole the thunder here, but of the question, have you considered Rochester for an investment from both audiences? You can see 91% have not. So stands to reason, if only 30% know we exist as a, as a place to make an investment, that number is going to be yes for people that actually have sort of made that investment. So, you know, naturally when we see this, this result, the question becomes, okay, why aren't they considering us? And you know, obviously from both site selection and executive audiences, the number one reason they're not is they just, they're unaware of opportunities here. And what's funny is when you go into the open-ended answers, even the things they think are framed in the context of, you know, sort of, but I don't know. I think that the market would offer this or this or this, but I'm not really sure. And so even where there's sort of a, a positive perception, it's framed in sort of the ambiguous. So number one reason for both audiences is just lack of awareness. What's interesting, when you look at the second and third reason why people aren't considering us or why customers aren't considering us, you start to see a split. So the way I like to think about this is for, for a site selection professional, they are advising a client on where to make an investment. So they tend to approach these things very much from a business perspective. So you see, see things like they have concerns about talent. Is there talent here? Is there a pipeline of talent here? And this comment of a small market, the small market is really in response to attributes or assets here. We have small transportation or we have small quality of life or we have small. It's not so much population, it's everything that goes with that. When you look at it from an executive's perspective, they're very much framed sort of against living here because that's a person that if they are running a business, likely they would pick up and move with that business. So for them, they are, in my opinion, these are more personal decisions. It's going to be cold. It's going to be isolated. It's going to be remote, things that are affecting them as somebody that might be moving a family here.
Mike, can we just pause for a moment?
Absolutely.
Member Norton?
Yeah. And I, I've talked to Patrick Sieb about this a little bit. When I heard about this at first, that number two, the second under site selection just really shocked me because Minnesota as a state has been known for its high level of education and Rochester even more so than the national averages. We have our communities filled with people with MDs, PhDs, JDs, you know, masters and whatever we're, and, and our graduate or college graduation rates are over the top. So there is a gap somewhere between what we as a state and, and specifically Rochester has to offer in the area of talent that is not getting out. And so not only do we have work to do with that, but I think we need to ask the state to help us get the information out about how well educated the state of Minnesota is because Minneapolis and St. Paul are just a few miles away, right? So if you come here, not only do you have access to the smart, great talented people in our community, you're not that far away from a larger metropolitan area that also has that talent. So just, this really struck me and I, I, we have a lot of work to do here in that, in that area. And, and as you're pointing out, having people know who we are. And it was, I'll just say, one of my frustrations early on when Destination Medical Center from the very beginning started doing advertising, we kept doing it locally. And I was like, no, don't hit locally. That advertising needs to be someplace else. And so this is really resonating with that idea too, is people around here know Rochester, people around here know Minnesota. It's the other people we got to get to who don't know how great we are.
You, you sort of get the results you earn. And if we're not out telling that message, then it's no surprise that, that people don't know. And I think you hit on something really important. So a misperception that what their belief is, is factually not accurate. And so what that tells us from a storytelling perspective and Gino, who we're working with to sort of build messaging on, what do we do about this? That's going to be a big one to say this is not an incorrect, or this is an incorrect statement. And therefore what is the data that goes out and starts to, to move that narrative? So the last takeaway from here is there's really two sets of messages we have to build. We have to build a message for sort of end users, executives, and we have to build a message for this connector community that is going to be informing those executives. Doug Baker has his hand.
Yeah, thank you. I, can you hear me? No?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, my comment on talent is, I, I agree mayor with your general conversation about talent, Minnesota. Which we've got to protect because honestly, kids coming through high school now, this is not going to continue. But what's, what companies will be looking at is often, and the, the reason they cluster, say in Boston or in San Francisco is they're looking for specific talent for the industries they're in. And so biotech, we may have some base, but we don't have the significant cluster of talent in a biotech area like a Boston would. And so if they're expanding there and expanding to Boston, then they know that there is a huge swath of people who have worked specifically in this industry. And they have, you know, talent at the top, all the way down to entry level talent capabilities. So it's more nuanced than just college education and the rest, when you're looking at moving specific, say R and D facilities and the like to a certain region. I'll just throw that out.
Yeah, I, there are a couple of points I want to make. This is really helpful and really sobering. And you know, one of the first questions is, are we as Destination Medical Center allocating enough to money to, it's not all about money, but are we putting enough of our budget into marketing if this is at this sort of stage? And I, I would argue this should be a real gut check for us to rethink a bit about where our resources are going. The second thing is this talent thing is really, really interesting. If you are working at Google in Silicon Valley in, let's say you're working in some sort of programming issue and your spouse is working in San Francisco and advertising, that is not different than the experience as far as commuting goes, to the degree the commuting is even that big of an issue anymore as it is here. The difference from Silicon Valley to San Francisco is pretty much the same in commuting time as Minneapolis and Rochester. We do not sell that. I'd also tie this to conversations Jim Campbell and I have from time to time about how frustrating it is to be working on issues in Rochester on Destination Medical Center and then working on issues in the cities which are now heightened as the university begins to think about what they're doing. We are not collectively selling all of this. And I am constantly saying to people in Minneapolis who are doing convention work, we should be thinking about Rochester. And I'm saying it now here in Rochester, the exact same thing. The idea that these are two different ecosystems, if we look at that issue of rural, remote, small market talent, unaware, all of those are different if this is part of the ecosystem. The weather, we're all in it together. Okay. But, but the fact of the matter is the idea of selling these things together makes a lot of sense. And mayor, your point about, Madam Chair Mayor, the point that you're making about talent is really interesting. Because my understanding, and I don't know whether this is valid or not, is that the talent issue in Rochester is perceived to be, there's a lot of people who understand issues relating to medicine. The trailing spouse issue has always been really interesting in Rochester. Where my, my gut tells me, and I think it's true, that there are a tremendous number of people underemployed who followed a spouse here and may not necessarily be in the same industry. So I really think there should be some research on who's here already and they may have deep knowledge in, name it, you know, I mean, and so I think we ought to get even sharper on that, that talent and what's here and what's, what's growing. Yeah. So those are the main points I had.
Thank you, member right back. Member Williams.
Yeah, I, I did all, all really good points. I go back, mayor, you mentioned the importance of deed, several folks have talked about the importance of greater MSP. Those are the entities that are charged with selling and marketing the state and our companies and our, our economic climate. So I just, I think that collaboration that you're referring to is really important. I, I also think, you know, part of how are we going to distinguish ourselves here? Absolutely talent matters. The clustering, the, the critical mass of, of others that, that I think Doug is, is referring to is, is important. I think we also have to just keep creating a great place. The place making matters so that when we do connect with someone who's considering this, they see this really unique cool place. And so things like Discovery Walk, the riverfront, the connection to Soldier's Field. They, they see those, they see that great place and say, yeah, I, I would like to be there. Especially in the, in the context of kind of the current economy and, and how, how flexible work is now. I don't have to spend an hour and a half on, you know, on, on the train or on the highways in, in the Bay Area.
Right. I'm sorry, one other comment that I, I want to make is it is really, really hard to convince somebody that, that they're wrong. It is much easier to convince them that the factors that they based a piece of information on have changed. The reason I say this is that we don't have to tell everybody they're wrong about all that. They are sort of. But the fact of the matter is the conditions have changed because of Destination Medical Center. So along with generally talking about this, it does strike me that we need to do a bigger job, a more aggressive job in talking about the fact that there is this 20-year initiative that we are well into that is having huge results. And if maybe they were here a few years ago and don't know about all of this, or maybe their cousin's friend said something to them about their visit here a while ago, it's different. And there's, and it's going to be differenter, betterer. So those may not be the marketing words we will use, but the marketing concept I hope we stick with.
I appreciate the, the feedback and I, I will just add a couple of comments because I know this is really going to lay the groundwork for developing a plan about what do we, what do we do about this? And how do we change the results so that a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, it looks very different. The only two comments that I'll share is you know, it, it's, it's about leveraging your strength. And so it, it is a little bit of an eye popper about the results, about the feedback for Mayo Clinic. And so how do you leverage that effectively? And how do you leverage that in a way that Mayo feels is consistent with their brand and their interests as well? And that's, that's not an easy thing to, to navigate your way through, but it's a huge opportunity from, from both perspectives. The other comment that I'll make is I'm, I'm sure that this has been shared with the chancellor of the UMR campus. You know, this, this notion about having such a nimble partner here in Rochester and really from my short but impactful tenure at the university a few years ago, it was a model of innovation and nimbleness and creativity and to have a higher education institution affiliated in such an integral way with the broader brand of the University of Minnesota is also a huge asset that I think we haven't really kind of figured out how to leverage. So I, I, I'm looking to see if we have more comments from members and particularly from, oh, at, yeah, on this item. Okay. So maybe what we need to do is let you proceed, but I, but I know we've touched on a couple of things that both member Baker and member Campbell have an interest in, and I see their hands up. So we, we do know you have the presentation to get back to, but
Okay.
but let's go to first member Kate, Kate. Yeah, Campbell and then member Baker. Member Campbell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, this is outstanding. I mean, this is, this is the aha for me, sort of tells us, you know, how we're, how we're perceived by the outside world. So for me, this is sort of the bedrock of the work that's ahead of us. So thank you, Mike and your team for doing this. I guess the only question I raise and it's Question I raise and it's just from a. A a lack of understanding, you know, we talk about Mayo. And 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 people know about Mayo. But my question is. Is it Mayo Rochester or is it Mayo Jacksonville or is it Mayo Scottsdale? And when it comes to Mayo. I'm obviously Jacksonville and 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 Scottsdale are doing research as well. And. I I'm not sure I fully understand. Whether Mayo would want it to come to Rochester or would want it to go to one of the other locations. And it's just an issue I think that. I need to have a better understanding of.
Right, thank you.
Patrick, any response to that?
Well, and maybe Chris, I see Dr. Ottley is on screen. I'm not sure if that is, if you would like to respond to that.
Just just from a practical standpoint, Member Campbell, I had asked earlier, I think you might have been off screen for a moment about. What the reaction was to when we asked about Mayo and it was the broad definition of Mayo, not specific to Rochester. Now, your question. Is a different one and will defer to Dr. Ottley to see if he wants to provide an initial response to that.
Thank you, Member Campbell. I would comment that Mayo is a unified enterprise with a global presence. And one of the advantages of working and partnering with Mayo Clinic is that we've got lots of sites with expertise that's both. Numerous duplicative and geographically disseminated. So if we have a group, say, interested in working with. Cardiothoracic surgery and our cardiothoracic surgeons in Rochester are already working with, say, a competing company. That's okay. We can refer them down to Florida or Arizona and we'd readily do so. And in fact, those ecosystems are developing models. There's one called Discovery Oasis down in Phoenix. Specifically aimed at modeling what we're doing in DMC. So we can make those connections very easily, Member Campbell, and we do it all the time.
Thank you, Dr. Ottley. And Member Baker.
Yeah, thank you. I. I know how to say this without sounding pompous. I don't mean to. I was not surprised at the results. I think it was very smart to go do this survey. I would say there's not, I didn't find it overly negative, having done this. At the start of Greater MSP as well. I chaired that organization the first three years when we were building it and was on it for another, I don't know, seven or eight. So I don't find these alarming necessarily. The the problem is if you have high awareness and big negatives, here we don't have awareness. But we don't have negatives. So you know, weather is always going to be a problem. I would say two points. Facts are the biggest part of Mayo still resides in Rochester. The fact that the state Rochester, Olmsted, Mayo collectively have decided to do DMC, I think it's very wise. And a lot of these decisions end up going where the decision is easiest to execute. And and so the work the DMC is doing to beautify Rochester and make it even more a livable city. Only goes to serve the purpose of making Rochester ultimately a destination that partners of Mayo will want to come to. And I think that's how we have to think about this. The number one way to build a biotech. Company is you can't just like, you're going to attract people with jobs. And we're going to track people and we get companies to locate here, fill up the centers at Mortenson's building, et cetera, and start building a nascent or a early biotech center. It is sold out in Boston. You can't hire people. You can't find space. It's sold out in San Francisco. Oxford's tough at this point in time. I'm on the Merck Pharma Board looking for places to relocate new R and D sites. Is very challenging right now because it's such a hot industry. So there's a real opportunity here. We just have to understand it's competitive. Competitive within Mayo, our biggest asset, it's competitive globally and that we really have to understand that's who we're competing against. In that to attract people, we have to continue to do things that make it easy for companies to come here, which I will say historically is not. A Minnesota mindset. I'll just state that. So I love Minnesota. I love even our business here, but it's not easy. What you're doing is unique in Minnesota and I think what we should continue to do is think about it in the broadest possible sense. That's my, that's my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we go back to staff and let's see if we can. Presentation.
And I have a lot of notes. I agree with. Everything that you said, we're going to talk a lot about how do we make ourselves bigger and and it's not sort of a. Rhetorical question. I think there are things we can do from a marketing and from where do we draw the boundary and? How do we build assets that make this community bigger in a way that we can compete? I also think. In a lot of respects, our smaller size can be an asset for us in terms of navigating this industry. You talk to companies in other big markets and and there's a challenge to being there that we don't have here. So I and I also agree with with Member Baker. I didn't see a lot of negative here and the primary reason. Is this slide and there's a reason the font is big because for me, this was the number one takeaway and candidly. This was the thing I was most worried about because there's a universe where. Twenty percent of our target customers considering expansion and fifteen percent are looking here. And I don't have a lot to do then because the the ocean of opportunity is small. What this says is is it's sort of all blue sky. The the and this is just the executive. So our ideal customer. Doing all the things we need them to be doing that is the right shape and size for this market. Is regularly out looking for places to make an investment and that is encouraging from the standpoint of. If we start to do things to build this awareness and build messaging and and if we're just out more in front of them, we can start to move that needle. So. To me, this is is highly positive.
And we know how to find them.
Yeah, and we know how to find them. Was we demonstrated last year, we can get in front of them regularly when we when we get out there. So. Key takeaways first is consideration gap is huge, therefore it's a huge opportunity. Second, lack of awareness is universal. Again, it's an opportunity. We need to be out in front of those target customers sending that message. And third, and we've talked about them here, misperceptions abound, you know, everything you've illuminated over the last 10 minutes. Are things that that are perceived out there that we know not to be accurate. And so how do we build the message? How do we get that message out in front of these audiences in a real way to to start to turn those? So last thing we looked at was. So we know our customers out there making decisions. What are the lenses? What are they looking at when they are making these decisions? And we do that really to evaluate how does our asset base line up with what they think is important. So we sort of bucketed these. Across three different areas. The first was related to labor. So when they're making a decision and they're thinking about labor, what is most important and? We can see here is both audiences, the number one thing they look at is talent pipeline and that is defined as. It's really a measure of risk aversion. Am I confident if I put money into the ground in a community? Yes, I need employees day one, but I also need employees year 10 and are they going to be there year 10? For me, this is encouraging because we know we have a talent pipeline. We have higher ed here. We have talent at all different levels. And so again, from an education standpoint, this is just a thing we need to get out and message. The second thing that is encouraging. The second row up there, availability of scientists. I've worked a lot of different places and the. The negative around workforce is usually. It's great at finding entry level talent, but if I need senior people, if I need experienced people, if I need highly educated people, I can't find them here. We have the inverse situation here in that we have. A tremendous number per capita of highly educated MDs, PhDs firm work at our size. But it's also a thing they don't know. And so again, from an education standpoint. We have the ability to provide talent pipeline and we have the ability to provide really high end talent, which is what they're telling us they want. When we look at costs and locations, you can see there's a split here. And again, the split I think is reflective of what the objectives are. So for an executive, it's around transportation. Can I get in and out? Can my customers get in and out? How easy is it? How ubiquitous is it? And for a consultant, it's really about real estate. They are hired to deliver a site. So of paramount importance to them is are those sites available? Again, we have a good story to tell here about transportation. To your point. My house to MSP is quicker than San Francisco to San Jose or Denver to Boulder or. I came from Utah. My commute from my house to the Salt Lake Airport was about as long as it is here. So. It's just a lack of education. We need to let them know what the opportunities are here. And we're going to talk about some of the discovery lab, shared lab concepts before we have the ability to deliver on the turnkey lab space. So again. Encouraging from the standpoint of what we have and what we can build. And lastly, when it comes to community, what is obviously most important with everybody is how do we, how do we build and demonstrate a thriving ecosystem and and that's really defined as industry and service providers. And education and economic development and government, how do all of those people work in tandem? To really represent the best of our life science community. And I think that's a thing that we know. We need to spend some time on. It's part of the program. We know we need to to spend more effort on going forward. But I think it's a thing we can do very well here. The second most important, you can see proximity to innovation. Again, we have as good an answer to that as as any community in the country. We just need to. To get out and share it. So three takeaways, again, restating predictable talent pipeline is paramount. So we need to find that and share that message. High end talent has a priority over entry level talent. Again, it's a story we can tell better than anybody if we get out and do it. And the third is there are some things we need to do. We need to to. Make the real estate transaction a little easier for these companies and we need to spend time sort of building and nurturing the ecosystem we have here. So to summarize, we sort of bucket these takeaways into into three things. The first is. You know, building awareness in the short term is probably priority number one. So. How do we build awareness around Rochester as a place to make an investment? As DMC as an entity that can provide support? And probably most importantly, as both of those entities, the close tied to Mayo Clinic, because we know. People know Mayo and they think it's great. So how do we sort of tie ourselves to that? Second is we need to continue to build infrastructure and. We do that to make us bigger. We've talked about, you know, the size of the community and how do we make us ourselves bigger, building more infrastructure? Building more assets is a way to do that. It also reduces risk. It also makes us a faster market to operate in than than the competition. So again. I think the second most important thing and the third is. We need to spend more time building an ecosystem here. Part of that is going to be defining what that is for us. Engaging all of those partners and really working with them to improve the product. And here it's defined as as the community. I think one thing that's clear out of this is. In the short term, the thing we are selling. Is the ecosystem here as we build all of these other assets, the thing we're going to be taking out to customers that aren't here. Is that third point. And so we need to spend more time. I need to spend more time. Chris needs to spend more time in market, working on that piece of it. Because that's what ultimately people are going to be attracted to.
Mike, pause for a moment. Member Carlson.
Yeah, a quick comment, just if you think about earlier in the meeting, the conversation around strategic planning and thinking ahead. I wish these segments would have been situated next to each other because it's just so clearly integrated and. All the work that we're thinking of needs to align with what we're learning and where we're going with recruitment and bringing businesses here to make DMC. As successful as it can be. So I just really appreciate that these were in the same meeting together and all the work you've done to help us understand this baseline. We can build a really good approach in in your work, but also as a board and how we invest.
Absolutely. So I think the last.
Member Williams.
Just a question that, you know, obvious bit of a rhetorical question. My point earlier about place making and how much. Time and of our resources we spend on place making and. Infrastructure, I guess the question that pops up in my mind is. What percentage of our resources and or effort are we spending on? Business development and marketing and is it the right balance? With the resource that we're dedicating to place making? Because this argument, this this data and information would seem to suggest. That that we ought to be. Perhaps thinking about that differently. So I, I don't know that we have to discuss that today, but that's the question that pops in my mind.
Yeah, Member Williams, I think that reinforces an earlier comment by Member Ryback as well. And Patrick, maybe we can spend some time talking about how to. Elevate some of that discussion about allocation of resources and our planning perspective. Sooner rather than later for the benefit of staff, putting together some thoughts about multi-year budgeting.
Right.
Why don't you proceed, Mike?
And I just on that comment, I would say I I think it is wise for us to scale this. Judiciously, you could throw a lot of money at a lot of things and I've been places where they do that. I think what we want to do is we're building a program where we can evaluate. What sort of drives a return and what doesn't so that we can be smart going forward. I think it ultimately needs to scale. But I would not suggest we just go out and start throwing money at things until we have a few years of. What has really moved the needle and what hasn't. Every market is different and this one's going to operate a little bit uniquely. And so. I I think you're right, but I I would just urge, let's proceed cautiously. Last part of this.
Member Campbell. Member Campbell.
Well, I just. I had to step away. I had to step away a couple of times, but.
Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it might have been on our end.
Okay. I had to step away a couple of times. I apologize, but you know, th- these findings are just fantastic for us to sort of understand. The reality that we're dealing with. I think it's. I think it's very important. That we share these results with certain other. Key players, deed, Greater MSP, the Governor's Office, the County Board. The City Council. I mean, they're just, there's a group of people that, I mean, we're, it's it's a big team here and it's a team game. And it's really important that the team understand the reality. Of how we're perceived and the challenges that are ahead of us. So I hope that. You think about who else you share this incredible information with going forward.
Thank you.
We've learned a lot of stuff, but we've been doing a lot of stuff too over the last year that I think is in alignment with this. So Chris will run through that.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Good morning, everybody. So a quick update on the three pillars that Mike was talking about, building awareness, building infrastructure. And building ecosystem. The good news is we did not wait for this study to be completed to put together our work plan for 2023 or 2022 or 21. The this is, this is going to be an acceleration of the work that we have been doing. This is the 2023 program of work. When we talk about creating awareness. What this represents is probably 20 plus engagements locally, regionally, nationally, and even internationally. With groups that we want to make sure are aware of this. For comparison. So we've been with your help, we've been able to do some capacity building in 2019. There would have probably have been five on this list. Of outbound outreach because of the the capacity that we had at the time. Last year it was probably 10. Next year, this year it's 20 plus and that's not counting the groups that are coming here. So there's probably an equal number of groups that are coming here. And learning more about this. And even this year already, by the end of February, we we will have had two international groups that have traveled to Rochester to learn about what we're doing. So. There's outbound and inbound activity that that's taking place. We're developing a new website, enhanced digital marketing. We now have some direction. On terms of content and where we need to be getting this message out and we know, we know how to find. Those groups based on the study that we've been doing. The second piece is around building infrastructure and we've had a hypothesis for a while now that we need to build. Shared laboratory space for early stage companies and. There are two bodies of work that have been sort of validating that. Part of that is the work that Mike has led on this study. And then we've also been doing a market and demand study. For shared laboratory space for early stage companies and that work is going on as we speak. We will have a final report for you all in time for the next board report. What we're hearing back on the early reports from that analysis that is taking place is small footprints, shared labs, short lease terms. Access to shared equipment are all very important attractors to those early stage companies that turnkey space. So that market demand study is underway. It's validating much of what we already knew. It's exposing some new information as well and it's really looking like it's aligned with what Mike. Has learned through this external study. Maker Lab is a similar sort of thing. What I just described was wet lab space. Maker Lab is more like. We come call it dry lab space or tinkering space. That sort of demand is also out there, we believe. And then the third element of our own infrastructure is the simulation lab. And so this is advanced learning space. We know Mayo Clinic has a world-class simulation lab. We know we need that for that. For the workforce training and for upscaling the workforce that is already here. And in this case, we are partnering with Grok, Grok, the Greater Rochester Area Universities and Colleges. Has a a proposal out to the legislature. They know that they need $11 million to build a simulation lab. And they're working on developing the operating model for that as well. So. That work is underway under the cover of the building infrastructure. So um, that work is underway under the cover of the building infrastructure.
One moment. Member Carlson, does it make it into a bill?
Uh, it, so far it has.
Okay.
Right. And then building ecosystem, Mike made reference to ecosystem um, that is a con, uh, a sort of a confluence of industry and service providers, economic development agencies, higher and all of those things you see on the right-hand side. And the good news is we're not starting from scratch. Um, and what we've um, we've been working real hard to uncover all of the healthcare technology companies that are here. They're sometimes hard to find because sometimes they're in stealth mode. They're very small companies. One or two people working out of a garage. We have at least 40 or more healthcare and life science technology companies here in Rochester. And I think most people, many people would be surprised to know it's that number. And we're starting to wrap our arms around that number and, and bring them together. And we have some listening sessions next week and beyond to bring them together to develop this community to, to help us understand what they need for us to be supportive of them. Do they need to convene? What do they need to know? What kind of services do we need to be able to provide? Or does the community need to, to be able to provide? There are a lot of players in the ecosystem. It's not us. It's ready. It's the chamber. It's all of these groups that, that are part of the ecosystem as well as the companies themselves. So we have these listening sessions convened and we're under, trying to understand what uh, their needs are. So that's the work that we're doing in terms of action, uh, action plans this year, and there's more to come.
Member Norton and then member Ryback.
So I really appreciate this and it's great to know that things are already underway and we're looking out, you know, the past and looking out into the future. And one thing, and, and this is a little ahead of the game, I know, but I'm just going to put it out there. And I know you're already thinking about it. I, I have no doubt. I'm just not, we're not seeing it yet. Which is if Minnesota is successful in the expo, it is focused on healthcare. And we have lots and lots of people we can get in front of during that process, as long as we keep Rochester as part of that experience. And so, you know, I, I participate in some of the meetings um, with that. I know Mayo has a small presence and that probably will grow as, if this becomes a reality. But I think we, we as a community and DMC in particular has a lot to gain if that's a reality um, for the coming year. So just setting that out there is something I see as potentially really helpful for us.
Thank you. Member Ryback.
One of the early uh, thanks, Madam Chair. One of the early um, interests we had many years ago was to say that lab space needed to be available to people who weren't dependent on Mayo to get that. So it's really great over these years to see this moving forward. So I'm thrilled about all that. The question I have is um, what is, if, if I was seeing that as an asset, as somebody wanted to locate here, how do I know that that's not just going to be built, but there's going to be a way to continue to maintain that? What's the financial tool that we have that tells somebody that we're not just gonna walk away and dust is on the Petri dishes or whatever is the contemporary version of that?
So the idea behind the, the shared laboratory space is that there's a large space that an organization is um, considered like a master leaseholder. And then they're subleasing out components of that space to companies. What that allows for is having a continuum of space available. So you have small footprints for the early stage companies. And then you have larger footprints that they can move into as the company grows. And at some point, they move out of that space where um, they're subleasing from somebody and they can move into their, their own space. And then ultimately, if they want to really scale out, we have other properties in town where large scale companies can do more manufacturing. What makes them all want to stay here is that ecosystem, right? That sense of community with all of the other companies that are here.
Could I just sharpen this a bit?
I'm answering the question.
The, the, so I understand public ownership, um, uh, contracted management. No.
No, actually, I think just to put a finer point on that, we or the city would not be operating a shared wet lab. We would be looking for a private operator who's in the business of running shared um, lab space. And that is their business model.
Madam Chair, if I can just, so the question I'm trying to figure out is 10 years from now, who owns this thing?
The operator of the, of the shared white lab.
So I think we should examine that, Madam Chair, because we're using public money to create a a, an amenity that we want to be an ongoing amenity. And um, it strikes me, we could be in a very difficult position if somebody's saying five years out, that wet lab thing didn't work. I'm going to lease it out to somebody who does.
Thank you.
Copying machines.
Yeah. So I think I may have answered more quickly than I should have in terms of who would own it. We are working on business. And that's part of the study that's going on is what are the business models? And what are the ways in which we DMC can support a, a, a shared lab environment? And what's the business model? And what are all the contingencies associated with it? So I don't think I was clearly answered and, and understood the point that you were making. So absolutely.
But maybe I can just kind of wrap up this small, short discussion now, and I'm sure we'll talk about it again in the future. With the understanding that the goal is to have this be a long-term asset for this community and that we envision this as continuing to be a competitive opportunity for us long-term.
That's right. Absolutely.
It's not space.
Sure that we have the, the right kind of partnership, ownership, operational structure, so that we can ensure that this publicly supported um, building out of this space will continue to be available long.
Right. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah.
Thanks. Was there another hand? I see any other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. This is obviously uh, going to be fodder, fodder for future discussions. So we appreciate your time and glad we got all the way through your presentation. We have a, we're a track record of that with you. All right, Patrick, um, I think we're at the point where we have really the update items. Um, am I right about that? It looks like uh, we know that Dr. Ottley highlighted a few of them.
So Madam Chair, uh, we uh, have additional um, reports in the, in the material and we are prepared to respond to any questions that you might have on any of them. We don't have a presentation on, on any of those, but we're prepared to.
Maybe just a comment on my part while the other members uh, check their notes to see if there's anything that they want to elevate, since we do have just a couple of minutes left. I'm curious about the district energy progress and particularly in light of the uh, recently passed legislation um, uh, about kind of creating a clean Minnesota by 2040. And I don't need somebody to really respond to that necessarily. I see you're looking at Kevin in the back of the room and he's trying to decide whether he should get up. But I, I do think maybe Patrick at an upcoming meeting yet this year, we can get a better sense of how new state legislation might be affecting that, what the critical issues are, either from a competitive footprint, coming from um, St. Paul, where there is a, a long history of district energy being a critical uh, energy provider in the downtown. You know, I have some familiarity with the issues over time about uh, creating enough of a customer base to make that a viable business. So just, I think we need to spend some more time on that at an upcoming meeting. And I was really just wanting to elevate the recent um, recently passed legislation.
I think you can expect um, uh, more formal report and discussion at the May meeting as we're tracking the state um, bonding and other work that's going on.
Great. Other questions or comments? Member Norton?
Yeah, I, I hate to even bring it up, but uh, catenary lighting, where are we on that? I know that was supposed to be up and it had some delays and is that going to get up? I hope.
Member Norton is referring to the lighting installation in um, Peace Plaza. And there were some um, uh, engineering work that had to be uh, addressed. And so um, I cannot at this moment tell you the date that that's scheduled to be reinstalled, being managed by the um, so I can't give you the answer to that question. I.
This year, but not, you can't give us the precise month.
I cannot give you the precise.
Yeah, I, and I would just say, I know it's been a problem and I know there was some design issues or what have you with that. But it is an important part of the look of that area. And, and so um, I'm, I'm hoping we can get to that before spring and things start opening up and people start being outside. So I don't, I don't exactly know what's going on, but that one I'm really looking for. And then the other one I just thought is something that um, we just had, which is looking at um, under the econ- economic, equitable economic development um, section is there is a study and work going on on um, our uh, BBE uh, work here in the community. And I think it, I know we're just starting that research and, and look at that, but it, it parallels nicely with what the city has been doing. And you know, I've just attended the first, the first little bit about that, but I just wanted to highlight I, I think there's so much possibility in this area with the work that we're doing in the community on workforce that I hope we can build up some energy and really move the needle on diversifying our workforce. And in particular, our, our business entrepreneurship. So um, I just thought I would mention that as well. It's not really highlighted on the page, but I know you're working on it.
Thank you. Um, there are uh, you're absolutely right. Um, and that's important work. Uh, and there's a lot of other work going on in the community around um, diversifying the economy. But that's a good example of one that um, didn't um, make it into the report.
No. All right. Well, thank you. Just a couple of uh, closing items then. Just a, a notification that the Board Executive Committee, which is myself, Mayor Norton, Commissioner Tine, Secretary Williams, will meet in March to review our annual private investment report, which needs to be submitted as well. And the next scheduled meeting of this full board is May 25th at 9:30 AM back at the Mayor Civic Center. I will add that at the executive committee meeting, of course, all board members are welcome to attend should they uh, want to do so. And then uh, before we adjourn, I just want to remind everyone that you may join us in the adjacent room for our annual collaborative work session.
And maybe I could just say for members who are online, um, that um, you can rejoin the link. The formal meeting will begin at 12:30 um, and the um, there is a, a slight time for reception and light lunch. And so for members joining online, um, the formal meeting begins at 12:30.
Great. And again, we want to thank member uh, Campbell and member Baker for joining us remotely. It wasn't a hundred percent seamless. Mostly that's my fault about uh, paying attention to your hands raised, but we appreciate your participation. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So I'll move.
Second, uh, roll call.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. And before I do so, um, I should just note that under the statute, when uh, members participate remotely, we are required to have a reason given so that it can be reflected in the minutes. And so um, perhaps as I go through the vote, I'll ask each of the two members um, to state that reason very briefly. So uh, first on the motion, member Baker.
Well, well, the reason is the uh, meeting schedule came out quite late. And I had a planned visit from my daughter who lives in Europe. So I don't know what else to tell you.
Personal conflict.
There you go.
Thank you. Member Campbell.
I'm, I'm in Naples, Florida, re- trying to get our home uh, put back together after Hurricane Ian. That's why I was gone talking to the workman.
Thank you. Uh, and then on the motion, do you both vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Member Carlson.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Norton.
Aye.
Member Ryback.
Hi.
Member Tine.
Hi.
Chair Wheelock.
Aye.
Secretary Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you, everyone. And again, thank you, staff, for, for all the work you did to prepare for the meeting.
Thank you.
We'll see you next door.